It being five o'clock, I will call to order the July eleventh, um, meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectmen. Is there anyone recording the meeting?
I will.
Okay. I'm freaking out. Alright, um, that being said, first I'll address, um, Lisa Pachico's not here tonight because her, uh, stepfather has passed away. So on behalf of the board, I'd like to express our condolences to, uh, Lisa at this time. Um, I'll also like to, uh, thank the Fourth of July Committee and all the people who made the, uh, festivities for the third and the fourth, uh, success. So, um, just please, uh, we'd like to say thanks because volunteerism is the root of it. Um, next thing I will address a little bit is the unfortunate situation with criminal charges being, uh, filed against the town highway surveyor. Um, as, all I wanted to address is what the board is doing and has done and why. So people have a little bit more of a clear view of what's going on. Um, the board, after conferring with, uh, town council, uh, issued a no trespass order to Mr. Mackumber for, uh, town facilities other than to carry out personal business, uh, both at the highway department and in the other, uh, town, um, or facility. We issued that verbally on Friday, June twenty-ninth, and we gave him a letter, uh, informing him of the such on, uh, Sat- uh, Saturday, June, uh, thirtieth. Um, just so people understand, he is highway surveyor basically until he's not. And, uh, there is no provisions under law to remove even temporarily a, uh, elected official. Okay, and, and no elected official can act on another elected official. Um. Um, presently, as I said, he is the, uh, highway surveyor. He's in charge. He's still carrying out his duties to the best of my knowledge and understanding. Um, and he is, um, being assisted, so to speak, by town administration in conveying his requests to the, uh, department as such. Um, it is hoped that, um, we can add in the near future a, uh, temporary working foreman to help us out with that. Uh, that is not gonna be, being done tonight, though. Alright, uh, the other thing is, the highway department is in demand. There's a individual that is out on workman's comp. Um, we're, uh, going to, uh, hire someone this evening to fill a position, uh, that has been come, uh, vacant because of retirement. So I ask the public to try to bear that in mind and as we go through this, especially the summer here, it's gonna be a little tough on doing, uh, everything that they normally would do. Alright, that being said, we'll move on.
Can I ask a question pursuant to the trespass order and what and how it affects Mr. Maycomer?
Um, well, at, why don't we leave questions to public comment?
Well, it's not a comment, it's a question directly related to what's to the trespass order.
I, I'd rather that he asked it at the end, okay? That way, that way we can.
There'll be sufficient time?
Yes, there'll be, there'll be sufficient time.
Okay.
And the reason why we put it to the end, uh, is basically because we're meeting at five o'clock. It's my feeling that we leave it till the end, that way if someone is coming here, is having a problem getting here for five o'clock, it can be here before the end of the, uh, board meeting, they can make a comment. Alright. Um, a- also, just for everyone's knowledge, I'll read the chapter and section of law that pertains to highway surveyor's duties. It's, uh, chapter forty-one, section, s- uh, sixty-two. "If a highway surveyor be chosen, he shall have the exclusive control of the ordinary repair of public ways in his town without being subject to the authority of the selectmen. If more than one highway surveyor is chosen, the selectmen shall annual- annually, before May first, assign each surveyor the limits and divisions of the ways to be kept and repaired by him." So that's the statute. Um, we have no case law to help us, uh, in our route. Our own attorney has, uh, said we're off in the wilderness. So we will try to do the best we can to be fair to, uh, everyone involved. That being said, onto the next item. Um, request for appropriation transfers between or within departments. And we have a request for a sum of ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents for expenses, uh, to go from personnel to expenses for the finance committee. So I'll exception, uh, motion on that, there's no discussion.
Make a motion.
Motion is made, I will second.
Actually, it's expenses to personnel.
Oh, fine, yes. Oh, yes, transfer from person, from expenses to personnel. Um. Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. The next transfer is, we transfer the sum of one thousand dollars transferred from personnel to expenses.
That's for the building department.
For the building department, Lisa, for the building department.
Motion approved.
Uh, motion made, I'll second that motion, all in favor, all in aye.
You might wanna just, on the first one, make mention that it's a PINCOM that's doing that.
This is.
Just have the minutes reflected.
The, uh, finance committee was the, uh, organization, the first transfer. Uh, the next transfer is from, uh, within the communications department, a request for four thousand five hundred dollars to be transferred from part-time dispatch wages to gross overtime.
Motion approved.
Motion made, and I'll make that second, uh, motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye. The third is a transfer, um, within the water, uh, and sewer departments, um, well. Own funds of four hundred and fifty dollars to be transferred, uh, from, I'm not using the correct form here, but. Uh.
Yeah, this is a finance committee reserve fund.
Yeah, okay, yes, um, right, it's, uh, to be, uh, used for, uh, overtime, uh, in these, in the amount of four hundred, four dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Motion approved.
Motion made, seconded, uh, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the appointment of, uh, truck driver for the highway department. Am, am I correct in that the candidate is, that's better, uh, approved, is, uh, Matthew Denal?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, so I would accept any motion, but, uh, be aware that Matthew Denal was the person that was picked as the top candidate.
Will you go through an interview process for that?
Yes, yes.
Uh, he did, actually.
Okay, um, is that motion approved?
Uh, motion made, I will second that, uh, Matthew Denal be approved as the, uh, new truck driver laborer for the highway department, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
And. That is it. So with that being done, um, I will open up to public discussion. Yes.
Um, I was wondering whether Mr. Denal's application was past the due date?
There was no due date.
No.
Oh, there was a due date because it said it right online.
No, it said it was to be filled, uh.
It had to be delivered by May fifth, uh, uh, was it May fifth?
It was opened until filled.
It was the, w- it was to be opened till fo- till filled.
I was just wondering how it worked, 'cause I know Mr. Denal doesn't have his driver license or any of the.
No, he doesn't have his license.
Why maybe his, his CDL or.
Well.
All of the applicants were interviewed, all of the applicants, um, met with myself and, uh, with the personnel chair.
Are we discussing temporary working?
And each one was individually ranked, uh, in accordance with a question, everybody was asked the same questions, the questions were then ranked.
And the person that had ranked highest was the one chosen for the.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Mark?
I'd like to review something that was discussed in a prior meeting and later discussed, the trespass order. You and I had a disagreement as far as the open meeting law, I did review it, and from the Attorney General's office question, is it a violation of the open meeting law for a public body chair to prohibit or limit public comment? And the answer is no. The open meeting law gives the public body chair discretion over whom they address the public body during the meeting and for how long, General Law's thirty A, Section twenty G, O M L, twenty thirteen dash sixty-four. So you were correct. Needless, nevertheless, the Attorney General encourages public bodies to allow reasonable public participation during meetings. And my only argument with you, specifically as the chair, not as an individual, is that if you look in this room on a regular basis, there are very few people who come. Couple of regulars. The public is not participating, or the public is not well received at these meetings. That's my personal perception, that doesn't have to be your opinion, that's my perception for the chair. And there are meetings in the past that have been special meetings for, whether it be a special project, a police station or a water line, public comes, come, ask us questions, we'll give you answers. We come, we ask questions, we don't get answers. We say we'll follow up a week later, we don't get answers. So if this is a, this is truly a citizen government, a citizen-run government, and it's either gonna be run by elected officials who think they're kings and queens and/or queens, or it's gonna be a true citizen government. That is my only beef, that when there are two or three people in the room, there's no reason why reasonable two to three minutes of public discussion per individual couldn't be allowed, it wouldn't extend a meeting unreasonably. I do understand the chair's position, that when you get a meeting and there's fifty, sixty, a hundred people, everybody can't speak. But I wanted to stand corrected.
Okay.
And acknowledge that.
Well, I, and I, I don't agree with you, exactly, I don't agree with you.
That's fine.
The, the fact of the matter is, under my chair, we have always had public discussion. Last meeting, the public discussion was, was not held because of a situation that we had not discussed that I did not want to be brought up before we discussed it, okay? Simple as that. And the, and I, I don't think that we ha- I, I have ever, uh, squashed anyone from discussing anything unless that person was going to speak about someone's personality, something like that, which is not covered, uh, by the open meeting law.
But it was, it was on the agenda, and it could have been, we knew going in, it could have been removed from the agenda.
Right, but, but, a- as you said, Mark. But as we, we said, yes, and that's, that's the chairman's prerogative. We removed something from the agenda tonight because it's not, we no longer have the, uh, ability to discuss that matter now, okay?
Can I ask a question about the trespass order?
Yes, you may.
Um, you said, "The trespass order applies to all town property or buildings for, eh, with the exception of personal use."
Personal, professional.
Personal, professional business.
Yes, he continued to do work in the town hall, for example, to commit and sign the bills.
Okay, so he can, so, so he has access to the library?
He could go, yes, he could go, he could go to the library.
He can go to, and I wanna, I wanna record it, you know, so there's, because it's a little confusing, and usually a no trespass order means you don't have to rebuild it. Okay, I understand there are certain, if he's still performing his duties in absentia, so to speak, um, he may have to go to the town hall to sign a document.
Correct.
Or to grab, or to get some meat.
He has been at town hall.
And so how does, now, can he go to the ball fields? Can he go to, see, this is, this is very, a very gray area, and quite frankly, we're not talking about somebody who is a danger to the population. We're talking about which, an alleged, an alleged financial crime. And, you know, going into the library or going into the town hall, or going, how does this play out?
Well, okay, well, you, you asked the question, and, uh, then you continued on with the dialogue, but, um, can he go into the library to borrow library books, so he uses the library? Yes, okay, um, if he's, if he's on a reasonable business, okay? Can, can he, uh, s- go to a cemetery for personal reasons? Yes, okay, the, the, no trespass order pertains to extra activity other than business or his personal business. Goes to the tax collector's office and, and hands a check for, for his property taxes, that's his right, okay? Go to the tax collector's office to have a dialogue that's, uh, not pertaining to the business of the office is not right. Okay, did I answer your question?
Right, I understand what the, what the purpose of the no trespass order is. And because he's still working, working for the town as the highway su- superintendent, because he's, as you said, superintendent until he's not the superintendent. Whose computer is he using? Whose vehicle is he using? And is he being compensated? Is, because I have a concern that if he's using a computer outside the town's database, the town's computer, is that information potentially compromised? Or is that information potentially not being recorded as it should be with, with our database?
Okay, I don't know what kind of a computer he's using, if he is using.
The, the, the highway department computer is not tied into any kind of, uh, town network.
But it is accessible use it.
Yes, it is, and it's my understanding.
Is he using it?
He didn't, I'm sorry.
Is he using it currently?
Uh, he is not.
He's not, so how is?
He didn't, I don't believe he used it prior to that, uh, I'm not aware that he was, uh, you know.
And what about, uh, a vehicle? How is he maneuvering through town on town business, because he's still conducting town business? Are we going to compensate him for a vehicle if he's using his personal vehicle, which I don't know what he's using right now?
He, um, is not using a town vehicle.
So we're gonna compensate him for his personal use?
Um, I don't believe we would be.
Why, why would that be, why wouldn't we let, allow him to continue to use a town vehicle?
Because we, we have been under, I, under the advice.
We have an attorney.
Yes, under advice of the attorney, okay? In Mark, what, what we're saying here.
Right.
Like I said, we're, we're cutting through the wilderness. We, we're doing what we feel is reasonable.
You do understand in an effort of fairness that he should not have to subsidize the town because the towns ma- the town, the town or the police department has made an accusation, he should not be financially penalized until, if and or until.
That's your opinion, Mark, okay? That's your opinion.
Well, it is. The river's still working, look what he's going through.
Well, yes, and, and, and Mr. Mackumber is being paid by the town.
But he's not, he's cheating the town out of tax, the, the, the town is paying for him and he's just not doing a hundred percent of his job.
Could you have gone to legal counsel and said, "Hey, we'd like him to keep his job, not change the locks on the door, take his truck away"? Could you have said to legal counsel, "Is that legal, can we do that"?
That, you not do that?
Yeah, that he keeps his job, why is he out of a job? You're trying to hire someone, he's right here, he's under a mic and a scope now.
No, he's, he's not, he's not out of a job.
He's not getting the job we're paying him for, is what I'm saying.
Well.
Could he stay doing it if you would've went to legal counsel? All three of you said, "Hey, we want Chuck to keep his job, we're gonna keep eyes on him, he's gonna stay working as a highway".
And the town wins, 'cause you're down to one minute.
I don't understand why, could you, would legal counsel, would that agree with that?
What, what we're doing is we're trying to protect the town.
If you wanna protect, put a gate up and cameras.
Hold on, okay? And it, if, we're gonna start shouting.
No, make it sound, I'm just saying, who you trying to protect?
We're, we're trying to protect the town's assets, and we're trying to protect town employees.
Four years ago, a bar bet got stolen from there, ended up across the street from my house. They stole all the manhole covers, this has been going on for years. Say nothing new.
When there was, when there was police cruisers coming in, Joe would say, "Hey, it's your cruiser, keep an eye on it. I'm not watching that, that's yours." Anything that went to the fire department would bring stuff there and leave it there, it wasn't up to them guys to watch it.
I, I don't understand what you.
I'm saying, when Joe was highway surveyor, the police came in and said, "We're gonna park, sit the cars back behind the police stations." Joe said, "Park whatever you want, you're responsible for them, I ain't watching them." And if one got stolen, it got stolen, Joe wouldn't lose his job. All of a sudden, you got all these accusations on Chuck because you're trying to bag him for all kinds of stuff.
No, 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 no.
The select board has been on his back, has been on his back.
Mark, you're out of order, alright? Mark, you're out of order, alright? And we're gonna, if we're gonna go on this, we're, we're gonna end the discussion. What we're, we're doing is we're responding to a criminal complaint. That criminal complaint is with the DA's. If you have an issue, the district attorney's the, the issue to bring, we're not, we're not talking about the child.
I'm saying, could you have gone to legal counsel and said, "Hey, let's make him keep his job, 'cause I've known him for forty years, I don't think he did", I mean, could you install your personal?
Okay, you, you asked a question, I'm gonna answer it.
Okay, go ahead.
We were advised, we explained the situation to our legal counsel.
Right.
They gave us advice. We hire them, they're professional people.
Right.
To, uh, oh, uh.
Protect the town's assets.
The town's assets. They give us that, they're the experts, not me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow their advice, we have followed their advice. Mr. Mackumber can carry out his duties to the best his, with the best of his abilities. We have just put limitations to protect the town's assets, that is it.
I got one more thing, it's totally separate.
Before, while we're on the subject of Mr. Maycomer, could I just follow up on that? Is, Mr. Maycomer, because he's, I, I don't know, he's not on administrative leave, he's still a highway surveyor. He is supposed to be doing the best he can, I'm assuming, performing his duties from home, so to speak.
From wherever he wants to be.
If he elects, if he determines on his own, on his own, that he can't effectively perform the duties with the restrictions that are presently placed on him, do we still have, we still have to pay him? And he says, "Look, I can't, I can't function like this because this is not the scope of my job. This is not what the job description is. You can't tell me I've gotta run a marathon and then cut one of my legs off." And can he say, "I'm not gonna run the marathon, so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna wait till this all plays out, do nothing"? We're still obligated to pay him, 'cause he is still a highway surveyor and it's an elected position. Can he do that? He can do that, if he elects to do that.
As an elected official, he could, he could come in on a Monday morning, tell a foreman, "This is a list of things I want you to do this week", and he could go off to, um, wherever he wants to go, and.
Well, I would think during normal course of an operation, to the town, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be acceptable.
The, the issue, the issue is this, okay.
But in this circumstance where he is being specifically handicapped by the town, by the circumstances, um, he may have actually a leg to stand on to do that. And, you know, I just, I just wanna clarify it, you know, so it's publicly, so it's out there, that if he do, if he elects to do that, that it's because he is being penalized prematurely, so to speak. And, and again, my opinion, not, not a legal finding. Um, I think, I'm, I'm not saying the board's jumping the gun, the board's looking to protect themselves. But the board is also bringing up, us up too, because, uh, was this a, was this a grand jury indictment? Or was this a police allegation?
No.
No, what, no to both?
The, okay, what I said, the department, the police department issued a press release. Any, any further, uh, inquiries, we take up with the district attorney's office, okay?
So you won't, you won't say whether, you're gonna, okay, you're refusing to answer it, thank you.
I'm not gonna answer that, I'm not gonna answer. I'm not refusing to answer it, that's gonna be our policy. It's in the, it's in the hands of the district attorney's office, okay? The police department carried out an investigation, they went by the process, which they, uh, do without any complaint. They, they actually even did steps that they didn't need to do, okay? But that's, but that's it, okay?
Fair enough.
Can I ask you a question? I mean, where are you going with all this? What is, what is the point of the questions, I'm not sure.
I wanna, I wanna know what, I wanna know what the process was. I wanna know if it was a domestic police investigation and charges pending, or if it went before, if, if an investigation was made and that information was sent to a grand jury, and a grand jury deliver, a grand jury which is, is secretive and private, and secluded, determined after reviewing the evidence, that indictment was handed down. There's a difference, to me, to me, there's a difference. I just wanna know, and ultimately, it will come out.
No, that there was a process, and it was in the, uh, press release that pretty much.
The press release is very little information, it's, it's, it's a public information officer.
That's your opinion, now, other people are saying there's way too much information.
I haven't, I haven't seen, as I said, I asked a question as far as the legal process.
The answer to your question, Mark, is that the process, the process, the proper process was carried out, and the proper process was carried out to the ultimate, okay?
Thank you.
I just got a couple of things, please. One question pertaining to this, and the other one's totally something separate. So if any elected official gets charged or allegedly accused of doing something, they automatically step down and step away?
No.
No?
No, no one, no one has stepped down or stepped away.
Well, not stepped down, but like you sent Chuck home, like if saying.
No, 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 no.
That's the, the problem, that it is an elected official, and they're, as long as they're elected, they're in their job. If, if he was, if he was not an elected official, he would've been out the door.
Okay, so I got something totally separate. Please let me finish, Honorable Chairman. Okay, "In my travels at the town hall and so forth, I have talked to at least four town employees and elected officials that admitted to me there is a BOS member that is abusing intimidation practices to further their own agenda, pressuring employees and officials, causing a chaotic workplace where they are hindered of performing their job to the best of their ability. This is unfair. I strongly recommend a private investigation throughout the entire town staff, privately assuring anyone coming forward, granted immunity for their job. No one deserves to be intimidated with the loss of their job, especially in order to make them do what someone else wants. This needs to be taken very seriously, as the town does not need any more lawsuits."
Well, to respond to that is, if that is a fact.
It is a fact.
Well, 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 no, 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 no.
Sorry.
It's, it's, it's not a fact. It's, it's, no, 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 and, and it's, it's your feeling, okay? And it might be other people's feelings, okay? But to say it is a fact, it is, it, it's, it's a.
It's a fact on this side.
Where have you witnessed it?
And it's been going on way too long.
But the fact of the matter, the fact of the matter is, you, you said the person was an elected official, correct?
Witnessed it.
Board of selectmen member.
Alright, a board of selectmen.
And he witnessed it also.
Okay.
And I'll be calling Attorney General, and I'll be emailing you this letter.
Okay.
And you guys also spent twelve, fifteen thousand dollars on a anonymous tip that was contamination down a highway bond. I think you were on to something, but you're looking in the wrong spot.
Well, the, the thing is.
I'm not anonymous, I'm right here in front of you.
But, but, you, you asked a question, now I'm trying to give an answer, and you're, you're interrupting, okay? The thing is, that if the person is an elected official, and that person comes up for election again, then it is the voter's choice what's to be done.
I'm sorry, I forgot to comment.
No, 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 it's the voter's choice, okay?
It's legal. Demarcations came up, like you just said, the highway department runs on its own without your import as select people. If that was truly happening, regardless of what Chuck does, do we like, do I like what he does? No, but he's the elected official.
Correct.
Without in, 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 interference from you guys, it hasn't been. He's been interfered with from the first day he got here. And I've witnessed stuff there.
Well.
And you wanna get lawyers together and put me on a live machine, let's go far.
I'll go forward.
'Cause I'm ready to, I'm ready, I'm sick of it. I've been involved in the highway department since nineteen seventy-five, and it hasn't been good.
Well, hold on, Mark, Mark, George wants to make a, make a comment.
I'd like to make a motion, and I think this is a serious allegation, and I think we should have an investigation initiated, whatever way that it's done, either through the Attorney General's office or, uh, but.
Well, alright, um.
From a legal perspective, whatever it would be, what would be the right way to do this, uh, David?
I honestly would have to consult counsel, I don't, I've never.
Okay, I, I will do this, okay?
I'm not an attorney.
I will, uh, see that the, um, town council is contacted. And it, but the, the thing that I would, I would request is if there's an issue, if there's, there's evidence. the, the thing that I would, I would request is if there's an issue, if there's, there's evidence that is to support these claims, then that evidence should be forwarded to the, the, to the town council.
Town council.
So they can make a, uh, a proper, a pro-.
Well, that's part of the investigation, and the investigation will speak for itself.
Right, yeah.
Sure. Yeah, that's good.
A proper, uh, whole, view of what's going on, or what is alleged to be going on.
Hold on.
All right?
Sounds good.
Okay.
So you're gonna accept his motion to do, uh?
Well, yes, okay, w- I'll.
Okay, good.
Motion made, seconded?
I, I'll, I'll just, hold, hold on, hold on.
Come on.
Who, who, who's in chat here?
You.
Okay, yes, okay, thank you. Um, George, I would like you to, uh, you know, make it a formal motion, in what the parameter would be, uh.
Uh, well, the motion is to investigate this allegation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which way the investigation should proceed, I'm not sure what the proper steps are, but maybe we should uh, discuss this with town council.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, see what they recommend that we do about this, but it should be addressed.
Uh-huh.
Right, that's good.
Right, did you have that?
Thank you.
I'll get it from the video once the video comes out, this later this week.
Um, all right, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Are you, are you gonna share that, with that, a, a copy, or?
What did you say?
It's chicken scratch, I'll write up a better one.
Okay, okay. Um, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Um, I'll accept the motion to adjourn, this is, oh, pardon, okay, you want to stop, pardon, um.
I think it's just still the right one to speak.
Hi Charlie.
Hello.
Um, I'm impressed that George's, uh, motion there, and, you know, it, it's difficult as a taxpayer and a, and longtime retired employee of the town to see, um, the highway surveyor go through, um, what he's going through right now. Uh, more or less being guilty until proven innocent is what I'm seeing. Um, you're tying his hands so that he can't perform the service that, that he's elected to do to the town over an accusation that, unless I'm missing some of the picture, or a lot of the picture. Like I, like these guys said, I, you know, if you wanted to limit his, his scope of financial involvement in the town until something's cleared, but I, I can't see how the guy can do his job, make assignments for his men, not knowing what the stock in the yard is, whether they can fulfill and carry out these things. I, I just feel as though it, it's unfair to probably, you know.
The, well.
Tie him up and, and not make him, you know, not, not allow him to do the service that the town's paying him to do for the community. And, uh, it, it's not like he's a newbie, he's been here for years, there's no, there's no financial improprieties on his record. And, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's hard, it's hard to believe to start with, and.
Okay, but, not, not, not to cut you short, John, but, the, the fact of the matter is this, okay, what we're faced with.
Yeah.
Accus- an accusation was made.
Yeah.
The, the level of probable cause has been found, okay? That's the level that the state or, or police organization will, will say has to reach.
Our police organization?
Our police organization, or any.
Or, or independent.
A- a- any police organization, it's, it's, the, the level of probable cause.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's, just so everyone realizes a little bit about what probable cause is, is, it's more than fifty percent, but it doesn't have to be ninety-five percent.
Keep in mind that the evidence was given to the attorney general's office, and they's.
The district, district attorney.
District, sorry, and they saw probable cause to go ahead with this. So if this was not an elected official, they would probably have been put on leave of absence, or at the very least. But because he's a elected official, you can't really do that.
Yeah.
And, and, pardon, and, just to add, and a independent court magistrate has ruled that there is probable cause, okay? So the Free Town Police Department has done, has done their job, and it's a nasty job, okay? It's a nasty job to have to investigate someone that you've worked with for years, okay? And, and I know that it was, it was not taken, uh, lightly by the police department in any means, all right? And so I, I kind of reject to what, what, the thing, well, well, the, almost like the police department's being blamed for this, okay? The police department is, had nothing to do with what transpired, they were, information was brought to them and they acted on that, and they, they drew other information from their actions, all right?
But, but.
And, and now it's in a court of law, okay?
But this, does it still have to mean he can't perform his job?
He, he can perform his job, Mark, no, 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 no.
Like John said, if it has to do with financial, why can't he go to the highway bond?
He, he can. Okay, and the pe- the same people who's, who say, why can't he go to the highway department?
Yeah.
If something else happened, who's the first pe- people they're gonna blame?
You really think something's gonna happen?
No, 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 who's the first pe- who, I, I, whether or not, Mark, but, but we have to, we have to watch out, we have to, we have to protect every, everyone.
Are you kidding me? With the stuff that's been going on in the last couple of years there, are you kidding me?
But Charlie, I gotta, I gotta say, I've been in town politics longer than I wanted to be. And I've seen a lot of things that are improper.
Uh, hold on, John, John, no, 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 John, time out, time out, no.
Um, the last, the, the last. You're, you're saying that the police department is unfairly, um, in the picture here.
No.
The last election that Chuck had, I watched, I watched some.
No, 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 John, no, no, we're not going there, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I make a, no, 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 we're, we're not,
I was talking about your character, let it talk, it's his own perception.
We're, we're, we're not talking about anyone's character, and this, we're not, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, make a.
Okay, I know one thing, I'm talking about the, uh.
Can I, can I ask a question about?
But the police department was involved in that last election, they loved him.
See, they love him.
Charlie, you're just gonna, totally an off-the-wall question about the, the film.
No.
Mr. Chairman.
No, no, we're not, we're not talking about personality, because somebody has.
I'm not talking about pers- I'm not talking about personalities.
No. I, I'm closing, I'm closing public discussion now, okay?
This is why, this is why nobody shows up, sir, this is why people, this is why people argue with you.
No, well, well, I'm, I'm, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna attack, we're not gonna attack people, we're not gonna make accusations.
It's not a question of. You're very defensive of the police department, and is it possible because of a prior career is why you're defensive of the police?
Can I just say one thing here?
No, see, now, now, see.
I'm not attacking you, I'm asking, it's a question.
Yes, yes. I, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn, George.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Can I just say one thing to everybody?
All right, motion to adjourn.